Good evening. I'm happy to welcome all of my fellow board members and call the August 25th, 2020 School Board Meeting to order. We continue to modify meeting processes in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Public attendance is permitted on a limited basis, allowing for 30 persons, in addition to staff and board members, to be present. Persons wishing to make public comments are able to make them in person, or were able to make recorded comments, which we will listen to at the appropriate time. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Ms. McDougall?
Present.
Mrs. Duskovich?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Present.
And Mrs. Campbell?
Present.
The board will now hold a moment of silent reflection in memory of one of our BPS family members who recently passed away. April Daniels-Lockaby, a teacher from Space Coast Junior/Senior Hospital, Junior/Senior High School. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
At this time, I would like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community who would like to start us off this evening. Ms. McDougall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple things. First, I want to give a shout out to Principal Jones at Audubon. She sent me a video that she provided to the whole community of Audubon students and parents of what it's going to look like when you go back to school. It was amazing. Well done. So, thank you, Principal Jones, for sharing that, and I so appreciate it. I also want to remind classroom teachers that Bright Ideas Classroom Grant is open, and it closes September 18th. This is a grant, so if you have a great idea and don't have any money to fund it, this might be a place to do that. So, don't forget to check at Bravard Schools Foundation. And last but not least is, quite frankly, I want to give a shout out to our whole staff, from our school staff, to our administrative staff, to our bus drivers, to people who keep the air conditioning going. This has been an amazing opening. It's not our typical opening, so I want to just give a shout out to everyone who has worked so hard, put in so many hours to make this the best it can be at this time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDougall. Ms. Duskovich?
Thanks, Ms. Belford. Of course, the entire staff, every employee is going above and beyond right now with the different circumstances, but I'd like to shine a little light on our ET people at the moment, because they are not only supporting the traditional brick and mortar technology issues that we traditionally have, they are, they've extended that with the same amount of support staff and the same amount of employees, they've extended that to all the e-learning. So, they're supporting students, they're supporting parents, teachers, in a way they haven't before, in a capacity they haven't before. I reached out to Mr. Cheatham this morning and just asked a couple questions, and he said, today alone, they had 1,200 Zoom meetings going at the same time. And he said, that's not counting Microsoft Teams and all these other programs that they're using, that was just Zoom meetings going on. And also wanted to thank the tech associates in each of the schools, they're spread really thin right now, supporting teachers, students, parents, again, within the schools. And we recently made some adjustments that have spread them even more thin, so I'm still very concerned about the amount of tech support staff that we have in the schools. And last, the ET help desk. Day one, they had 270 tickets they opened, and did my voice just get louder? Did they turn up?
I think they're adjusting you.
Thank you back there, Mike. So, the, the, the help desk, I guess, 270 tickets they opened on day one, and had to, of issues they had to solve, so they're working tirelessly. And Mr. Cheatham also suggested that maybe I give a shout out to the staff around the school that are filling in the gaps for, for, for the rest of our tech specialists that can't get to all those. So, you know, the front desk clerks are answering tech calls right now, our media specialists are all of a sudden becoming tech specialists, everybody is becoming an assistant tech specialist that, that is free and able. So, thank you to all those that are supporting technology right now, we are dependent on it, and we appreciate it. Thanks, Ms. Belford.
Thanks, Ms. Duskovich. And I just have to say, to add on to what you said, I got an email from a parent the other day that said, the SRO at the school was trying to fix a webcam on one of the computers. So, I think truly everyone on the team has been, been pitching in to try to provide that support. So, thank you. Ms. Campbell?
Thank you. I'm going to piggyback a little bit on Ms. Duskovich's, because I had techs on mine as well. I got to visit 10 of my schools yesterday on opening day, and, you know, things were, you know, there was the whole Zoom going out on the entire Eastern Seaboard thing, but other than that, things were going really smoothly, and students were being cooperative. But I had a conversation with one of our principals that said, I've been asking about the computers, because we, we have that, that we talked about several, I think, Ms. Duskovich, you asked about how many computers were still out, right? And one school said they loaned out 400, this was an elementary school, 400 devices last spring, and as of right now, they've gotten all back but four. So, I think that's pretty, pretty amazing, that they've, they've done so well. And another, I talked to one of the techs at our schools who said they, they still had a few left, but they had gotten back, 15 of the ones they'd gotten back were, were broken, but rather than just, you know, what's the process, we, you know, I forgot the term.
DCR.
Yeah, right, DCR. They, he had said, okay, what can we do? Can we piece them together? And it actually, team had salvaged 10 of them out of the 15 broken ones, were able to kind of put parts here and there, and, and save 10, and, and so they could have devices for this fall. So, great job, and great stewardship of, of our materials, and appreciate them at the district level, as well as the school level. We have applauded our staff. I just would like to say, kudos to our students yesterday. Every principal that I talked to talked about our students doing such a great job. They, they had a lot of challenges to deal with yesterday, but the principals, I said, you know, the students walked in, they all had a mask, they've been cooperating. I saw first graders lining up in the hallway, and they were remembering to, to space out, and, you know, just, high school principal, same thing, students are doing a great job with it, they're really being cooperative. So, just wanted to give a big thank you to our students for, for taking on the challenges, the ones who are in the building, and the ones who are at home, being patient and waiting on the technology to work. But great job to all of our students who have already come back.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Mr. Susan?
Thank you so much. You know, the first day of school has always been a magical one for when you're a teacher, and the kids are coming in the hall, and even for us now, as school board members, as we do it over and over again, sorry, this thing's driving me nuts. And this year, it was, everybody came together in a different way of magic. It was the bus drivers, the crossing guards. I stopped and thanked a couple of crossing guards, hey, thanks for, for doing everything you're doing, all the way to the guys that deliver all of our materials, the guys, the teachers, the administration, everybody came together. And I think that that's what we do in education, and a lot of parents and people out there in the community, we've been doing this for decades, and this is a tough one. And I'm just so proud of all of our people who came together to make this happen, and I think that a lot of people need to understand that we all need to keep moving forward. There's going to be hiccups, I apologize, I think the Zoom thing might have been, because I was uploading all my dependents for the dependent audit, I had so many of them going in there, I might have crashed the system. But I think in general, I think we, as a, as a school district, did an amazing job, and I'm looking forward to doing everything we can to make sure that they, we have their backs, and that we're doing everything that we can. My daughter, she started school, you know, nine years old, and she came back, and I was like, honey, she was all excited, talked to her before she got on the bus, she gets on the bus, she comes home, I talked to her, I was like, please let this thing go right, and she said, I loved it, we had so much fun, all this stuff, but Dad, you got to work on recess, we're having to be socially distanced, I got to wear my mask the whole time, she was, she was making some, some lobbying efforts on that end, but loved it. And so, when you can see from the beginning, from your family as a, as a parent, all the way across the board, to seeing our teams come together, I'm just so proud of this district, and I just wanted to say that. I did want to tell the parents that are still out there, there's some of the parents that are still out there trying to figure out what they're going to do, understand that we have to make financial and economic decisions based upon what you do, so we'd appreciate it if you did it sooner than later. So, if you can, get off the fence and make a decision on which way you're going to go with the direction of the children, let us know so that we can do that. I wanted to thank the FSU Director of Football Athletics, who went on a Zoom call with me and walked me through how they clean their locker rooms, how they take care of all of their athletic, all the way from their equipment, to their locker rooms, to everything else. And then I forwarded that information to Dr. Mullins, and I think that we're going to be a, a good, we should have some really good responses in one of the areas that I think is a very, a very tentative place for the COVID. And I wanted to also say thank you to Sue Hant, because we have our O'Gally locker room is, the, the air conditioning is on the agenda tonight, and that is a big deal. Many people don't know that we haven't had air conditioning in many of our locker rooms, and we are addressing that. So, I wanted to say thank you to Dr. Mullins for making that a, a promise, and I'm excited because those kids now will be more in tune to taking PE and everything else. So, with that, I have a couple of things later on that I wanted to talk about, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Dr. Mullins?
Thank you, Ms. Belford, and just thank you to the board members for recognizing so many diverse areas of our organization. Many folks, you know, only see Bravard Public Schools as the school facing reality, and that certainly is our core mission. But behind every school are hundreds, and quite frankly, thousands of people who make schools run. One of the things that we take for granted until it doesn't work is air conditioning. And I have to just applaud and commend our air conditioning team, our chiller, building, automation, and HVAC folks. They literally worked 12-hour days leading up to this past weekend to open schools. Somebody worked through the weekend responding to issues under Sue's leadership, they had proactive measures, they knew where the problem points were, they turned air on over, I think on Saturday, we had seven or eight buildings that were, something strange was going on, they mitigated those. We did have one of our schools that continued to have some issues going into Monday, they worked, I think, half the night last night to, to get it up and running, and, and just the commitment, understanding the raised necessity of maintaining our HVAC with increasingly lean staff, just, I want to echo the compliments to, to the teams across the district. Mr. Susan alluded to our, our distribution team, they last week distributed all of our PPE equipment and supplies to our schools, all 80-plus schools, and we reduced, that's an increasingly lean team as a result of restructuring this past year. Our, our bus drivers, I, I had a wonderful start to the day yesterday, very early at our South compound, and about 100 drivers strolling in, the attitudes, the smiles, the, the positivity to get back on the road and serve our kids, it was just so impressive. And I enjoyed visiting a few schools myself yesterday. And our administrative teams, the support they provided to, to teachers, the positivity in the schools as I visited them was, was top-notch. It was just so impressive. The teaching staff to, to support everything possible, from escorting kids, the systems they had in place, because parents couldn't escort their kids to class, our parents were absolutely fantastic. They didn't, they, they understood the new rules and the procedures, they were compliant, they, they walked their kid up to the front of the school, they said goodbye, and they understood. And we, I just want to express my appreciation to our parents and our community. And then our teachers took over, they're there in the hallway, they take them to their classes, and just opened up their hearts to our kids immediately as they, as they came onto campus and even beforehand. The virtual tours, the orientations, the drive-through registrations, the logistics of opening a district are enormous anyway, and our, our administrative teams and our teaching staff just went above and beyond to, to make it all happen. So, we did, I want to share, we did open our first new elementary school in Bravard Public Schools in 10, over 10 years, and so they got off to a great start yesterday. Want to remind our community, we opened Vieira Elementary School debt-free, paid, that school was paid for with impact fees, and we were only able to do that because of the commitment of this board and the, the fiscal responsibility of, of the, the school board and our community. So, they got off to a great start yesterday as well, was able to spend a few minutes with them, and just a positive experience all day. So, to put it into context, I met with Cabinet at the end of the day, we planned for a two-hour debriefing to go over all the challenges and the issues, we were done in 90 minutes. I think that's a record for a cabinet meeting, so that's because our team that you see in the back were right there for their schools, to support them and to be responsive. So, my thanks to our leadership team as well. Thank you, Ms. Belford.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. First, if you all would please join me in wishing Ms. McDougall a happy belated birthday. She had a birthday this past weekend, and if, if you can imagine the, the stress that school board members were feeling on Sunday as she was celebrating her birthday, and I know that we were all anticipating and hoping and praying that we had a smooth start on Monday, so sorry that we were not able to be with you, but I hope you had a very, very happy birthday, or the happiest that you could given the circumstances, Ms. McDougall.
Thank you.
Like everyone else, I was out in schools yesterday and just floored at the positivity and the excitement, and, you know, even this weekend, talk about the preparation for going into Monday, this weekend, our, our lawn mowers were out mowing schools to, to try to ensure that they were ready for students to return on Monday, and so, not without glitches, obviously, we had our, our online glitches, but I'll tell you, I was in schools when teachers were dealing with that, and the positivity even during that frustration of just, they were in communication with the parents continuously, letting them know what was going on via text or, you know, different applications, keeping them in the loop. I was able to see when a couple of kids had been not able to get on for a little while, and then everyone was able to come together, and the excitement of it actually working. Every school that I spoke to, in, in different ways, mentioned the enormous amount of collaboration that has gone on in our district, within schools and across schools. Dr. Mullins and I were at Imperial, and the phenomenal music teacher there, if you get a chance to go by and take a look at her classroom and the way that she's adapted, absolutely amazing, but she was telling us- absolutely amazing. But she was telling us how music teachers throughout the district came together to figure out, what do we do about singing? What do we do about instruments? What instruments can we play? We can't do the recorder anymore. So what can we do? How do we get those instruments? One of our rock star teachers at Kokina reached out to me and shared that all of our sixth grade teachers in Brevard County have a group Facebook page where they're sharing resources and, you know, just, just anything to not recreate the wheel and supporting each other and understanding technology. There was MIMS I was at yesterday, and they were talking about the fact that several of the teachers who are not teaching in the e-learning platform, but have stronger technology skills, have been giving up their own personal time to help their peers with the technology and how to utilize everything. So just amazing the way that everyone has come together through this. And, and the, the amount of excitement and creativity that we're seeing in our schools is great among all of the, the many challenges as well. Also, I want to think, we had up in the North End, North Brevard Charities, that's not the right name. But anyway, we've had several groups that have been doing prayers for our schools. And so I was able to participate in a prayer walk with Astronaut High School last week, Thursday night. We're doing Space Coast, but we're doing the entire feeder chain. And so we, we went from Astronaut to Oak Park to Madison Middle School. And just a, a group of folks walking and, you know, praying over the schools and the students and the parents and the, all of us making our way through all of this. And I know there have been several others throughout the county as well. So I want to certainly thank all of those folks. And then, as if we didn't have enough going on, we had, obviously, everyone heard about the closure of Legacy. And according to the judge's order, timing was bad for those families. But I got to tell you, our team, everyone from Leading and Learning, ET, Mr. Novelli, from Operations, you name it, I think just about everyone on the team has been out there to address that situation. And our principals have been absolutely phenomenal at reaching out to each and every one of those families and welcoming, welcoming them back into our schools to ensure that they were ready to go today. So I have to give them a huge shout out for taking that on, on top of everything else. And then, before I go into our agenda, I wanted to take just a minute because there's been a good bit of conversation around the FEA lawsuit, the order that came out this week. So Mr. Gibbs, if you could just take a minute to kind of explain what occurred there, where we are, so that everybody's on the same page?
Sure. As everybody probably has seen on the news, yesterday, the judge in Leon County issued their order finding that the order that Commissioner, Commissioner of Education Corcoran issued was unconstitutional in part. And as a part of that order, he redlined out all the parts that are unconstitutional, which included all reopening requirements for brick and mortar schools, along with submitting of plans to the district. And again, yesterday, after that, before 5:00, the FEA, or not the FEA, the state filed their appeal on that case. And when a state agency files an appeal, it acts as an automatic stay under the appellate rules. So we are now in a holding pattern as far as what the order means for the state and the districts. I don't know if the commissioner is going to try and issue a new order, which would be one of his options, to try and moot this out before it goes to the District Court of Appeal. But, and I have not seen a timeline as of yet as for scheduling hearings or anything to get it resolved in as quickly as possible. So I'm happy to take any additional questions.
Anyone have questions for Mr. Gibbs on that? I just have one quick question. Are you suggesting that the commissioner could issue, because, because the order was only based on the specific emergency order, are you suggesting that the commissioner could issue a different order that didn't meet the judge's?
He, he could certainly issue an amended order that tries to get
Around it?
Yeah, get around what the judge struck and make it compliant. I mean, I don't know if he'd be successful. It might result in a, you know, hey, we want to challenge that as well on the same basis. But he, he certainly has some options. And it wouldn't be the first time someone's tried to moot out an order on appeal, just to get around the court system.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Okay. That is going to bring us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Belford and members of the board, on tonight's agenda, we have two presentations, Administrative Staff Recommendations, 12 Consent Items, three Action Items, and four Information Items. The changes made to the agenda since being released to the public in August 4 are as follows. Item A7 on Administrative Staff Recommendations and item G24 on Department School Initiated Agreements were revised. Added to this agenda are Presentations on Budget and Enrollment, as well as Fall Athletics Overview. Also added is F12 on Interlocal Agreement CARES Act Funding.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Duskovich. Is there any discussion? Please vote. Can you do a voice vote on that, Ms. Duskovich?
Now I have it. I logged out and in.
All right. The motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, would you please, please let us know about the Administrative Staff Recommendations?
Yes, there is one person on this agenda item for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. McDougal. Is there any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, will you please tell us about the presentations you have this evening?
Ms. Belford and members of the board, tonight, we have two presentations. The first is a Budget and Enrollment Update. Ms. Cindy Lasinski, our Chief Financial Officer, will provide us with that information. And Chris Moore, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, will follow with the Fall Athletics Overview. Ms. Lasinski, will you go ahead and provide the presentation to the board and the community?
Okay. Good evening, board members. Thank you for the opportunity to keep you informed on several topics. The first I, the first topic I want to cover is the current and projected impact of the coronavirus on the state budget, specifically reoccurring general revenue. We will also revisit FY7, 8 state reductions. Also would like to discuss what projected state general revenue declines could mean to our current budget outlook, talk about what steps we're currently taking, and finally round that out with a brief on enrollment for the first day numbers. So the impact of the coronavirus severely impacted the state's general revenue collection in the last quarter of FY20. They were actually, Florida was doing very well, the state was doing very well all the way up into March. And then, you know, the last quarter, general revenue went down, it went below the January estimate by almost $1.9 billion, which is a 5.7% decline. Sales tax was 6.1% below its expected level, accounting for about 85% of the shortfall. So tourism is something that the state of Florida depends on. And the last quarter of 2019 took a severe hit. On August 14, the Office of Economic and Demographic Research held their General Revenue Fund Estimating Conference. There were substantial adjustments to the earlier general revenue estimate in January. And then you can see in 2021, there was a $3.4 billion adjustment. And then there was also a, which equates to a 9.9% decline compared to January estimates. And then in FY21, '22, the adjustment was $2 billion or a neg, or a 5.6% decline. Again, that is compared to the January estimates. And then January, you know, no one had any idea that we would be where we are today. Now, the estimates assumed several things. They assumed a vast improvement with availability of a vaccine in 2021. And it also assumed that Florida is permitted to utilize remaining CARES Act funds to mitigate any revenue shortfalls. So those were the two assumptions that they used when coming up with this forecast. And again, it is a forecast. And then below, you can see that the state's adjustments during a similar time in 2007 and '08. And there, this provides context to where we are projected to experience this year and next. And then you can see in 2007 and '08, there was a adjustment of $2 billion or a 7.5% And then finally, in, in mid-September, next month, there's going to be a long-range outrage, outlook conference. And this will include the adjusted general revenue estimates that the EDR projected. So they will include those. And then when they do that, they will, they'll create a three-year outlook. And from that three-year outlook, we'll get a really good preview of what FY21, '22 will look like. Again, that's going to be next month. And then the legislature will use that information when they reorganize following the November election. And they'll have a better idea, that will have, again, they'll have estimates, but they'll have a better idea and then come and decide what they want to do and examine the health of the state budget. So more to come on that. So revisiting fiscal year '27, I'm sorry, revisiting fiscal year '07, '08, you can see that the state overall reduced the FEFP budget by nearly $500 million. And what they did was they took a, a percentage across the entire board of FEFP across all the districts. And the first reduction that we took in 2007, 2008 was in the second calculation. And you can see that was $7.4 million. And then the Brevard took another decrease in the third calculation, and that was $6.1 million, equating to $13 million point, $13.5 million in 2007 and '08. And again, that just kind of gives you some context about the last time there was a downturn in the economy and what the impact was. So what does a potential reduction mean for BPS in FY21? You know, again, during fiscal year 2007 and '08, BPS lost $13.5 million in state FEFP revenue. By extrapolating the current state revenue loss and state variables, the worst case for Brevard this year, the worst case scenario would be a 3.9% reduction. And that would equate to a $22.4 million reduction. Now, this reduction assumes that the state does not use any reserves to offset, offset their revenue shortfall. It also assumes that they, they take a proportional across all entities that receive general revenue funds. It is likely the state will use a portion of the state's reserves, but conservatively because, you know, again, they're going, there's still a lot of unknowns out there. The state will not know how long the coronavirus will affect the state. So, and this is my opinion, they will, I don't believe they will use all their reserves. It wouldn't be prudent. But they, I believe that they will use some of those to offset any kind of budget reductions. And again, the EDR has provided updated estimates, and we don't know exactly what the budget impact will be for BPS. We will have a better picture following the Long Range Financial Conference mid-September. And while we remain responsible and prudent, we will focus on reopening our schools safely, protecting our current teacher staff, and focus on delivering excellent education to every student. And we will continue to monitor expenditures for ongoing savings and protect fund balance to buffer any potential mid-year And then I know the board understands this next point, but this is just something I want to say for the public to understand. When we talk about a budget plan, a budget plan is, is based on projected revenue to cover projected expenditures. And it is just a plan. It is not money in the bank. And so when revenue comes in less than expected, then, then there has to be adjustments to balance the budget. So again, revenue or budget isn't money in the bank. There, if, if we don't collect that revenue for whatever reason with the uncertainties that there are, there, there has to be some kind of adjustment to make sure that we balance. And talking to CFOs across the state, they have advised their boards to hold on to as much savings and posture for potential mid-year reductions. And then every dollar we save today is a dollar that, that can benefit us tomorrow. And then, so what are we doing? These are some of the prudent steps that we are taking as we move forward. We're analyzing district positions as they become vacant. We're restricting out-of-county travel. We will continue to monitor contracts for potential savings, evaluate the use of CARES Act funds to see if we can use those funds to maintain workforce stability. We're going to do a district-wide position analysis and also establish quarterly, quarterly rebudgeting process to continually evaluate the lapse rate. In that way, we will have a timely data that can give us a better insight of where we are with our financial position. Are there any questions so far? And so now we get to move into student enrollment. And as everyone mentioned, yesterday was our first day of school. And this is just kind of the, the first snapshot of the first day count. You can see that we are, we were under-enrolled in the first count. First day counts are always difficult to project. And this year, as you can imagine, it was a bit more challenging, from Zoom going down to late buses and simply the human element of hand-counting kids in classrooms. That said, we do have many kids that have not yet registered for school, and our administrative teams are reaching out to those families to help get them registered. The state anticipated these enrollment fluctuations this year. And through the July 6 emergency order, the DOE committed to hold school districts harmless for lower enrollment through at least the fall semester. So we have some time. And again, the first day counts are always a little bit messy. You can see on this slide, if you compare student membership last year to this year, there is about 11,500 student difference. As each day goes on, I think those numbers will balance out and, and grow. As each day goes on, I think those numbers will balance out and grow. And this is just a first look. You can see BAVR virtual, that number increased quite a bit from last year. Charter schools also increased. Homeschool, I'll talk about that one at the bottom. The homeschool on the top chart underneath charter schools talks about homeschoolers that are, receive some kind of benefit, some kind of service from BAVR schools. So if they receive some kind of benefit from or service from BAVR schools, they're listed on that row underneath the charter schools. McKay scholarships went down a bit, and family empowerment scholarships did go up. When you look at that bottom line, the home education, that is the one that we need to monitor and watch. If you compare the actual from last year to this year, you'll see that there is a significant jump in homeschooling. And that's something, again, that we'll have to monitor. Is there any questions?
Ms. Duskevich?
The last number that I heard we were down was 7,000 students. Are you saying we are down 14,000 students?
Ms. Duskevich, Cindy, I'll go ahead.
Go ahead.
So that, this number represents all K through 12, pre-K to 12. We knew we had about 7,000, I think it's down to 5,500 now, elementary that haven't registered. So yes, this represents students K through 12. So that 5,500 to 7,000 are inclusive of the 14,000. Keep in mind that we don't have any confidence that that number is accurate right now. We, the counting process is very, well, isn't very manual, it is completely manual. Literally, people in buildings walk around to classrooms, they count heads, and they put them on a piece of paper, that piece of paper gets translated to the office, they accumulate those and tally numbers. Our first-day count is always difficult in a normal circumstance. The reality is, we had to validate e-learning kids, we had to see them online. So some kids didn't log on until later. They got bumped off because of Zoom, and we couldn't count them because they weren't online. We had parents coming into our schools all day yesterday and today. I know our e-learning numbers jumped over 1,000 overnight from last night to today. So at this point, at this moment, working with staff, we're not alarmed with enrollment. Certainly, homeschool increases is concerning, that's 1,000 students. But we see parents coming into our schools every day. Our next official count is Thursday, and then the following Tuesday, following Tuesday or Monday? So Monday is our third official count. I would echo Mr. Susan's comments earlier. We know we have parents who are waiting to see our school's going to stay open. We are open, and we are continuing to be open. And we're going to serve our parents and our kids. I echo the sentiments of the board, the success of starting our schools yesterday, and the great work of our teachers to welcome our kids back and our administrative teams. We continue to remain ready to serve our families, both in the, any one of the platforms, e-learning or face-to-face. And we'll continue to reach out to our families to connect with them and bring them into our schools.
I appreciate that you're not panicked, but that's a $100 million price tag if those families don't enroll their children in our schools. That's, I think it's, I think it's okay to panic. That changes the look of BAVR Public Schools.
If that continues to maintain, absolutely.
I just think we need to be very clear and loud about that so people know what this looks like down the road over this next year if 14,000 students do not return to BAVR Public Schools. Because I don't think the public understands.
Mr. Susan?
So I wanted to say thank you so much for your presentation. I love the fact that we restricted out-of-county travel. And just so that everybody knows, that includes out-of-county, out-of-state, everything. Out-of-county is restricted, so I wanted to say thank you to that. I love the fact that you are establishing quarterly rebudgeting for the laps. One of the most frustrating things, Dr. Mullins, that we talked about is at the end of the year, how much money's falling to the bottom line. But you're actually taking a proactive so that we can adjust based upon the year. So thank you so much for that. I do, would say, one of the areas that we could add to this, this is just me speaking, we have a series of speakers, consultants, and individuals that come in, and they speak to us in various forms, right? But we've never really set up a metrics to see how that impacts directly into our education piece. So that might be some, an area we look at in the future. And that's just the fact that sometimes we have these people come in, they teach us, but then how it unpacks into the schools may not be as prominent as what we want. So at a time when there's this, maybe that's some an area that we could look at, that's all. And then I did, I wanted to say one more time, Dr. Mullins, parents, please. Besides the fact of trying to figure out how we're going to do this, when you come in late, it impacts the staff, the teachers. The staff has to sit down, reregister, do all that stuff, they have to reschedule. The teacher has to sit down and add that person to the classroom, catch that person up. Everything's kind of impacted beyond that. And we want everybody to take the time to make the right decisions. But at some point, please let us know. But other than that, everything else here, I absolutely love. Thank you so much for all your work. Really appreciate you coming on board and doing everything that you've been doing. Just want to give her a shout out for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Any other board members have questions or comments? Ms. Campbell?
Briefly, there we go. So one of the things that you mentioned was that the executive order. And I think Mr. Gibbs, if you could, the part that the judge struck just recently, and we're yet to see how, that it didn't affect the funding part, correct? As far as them, it doesn't change as far as they're saying they'll hold us harmless for this?
Right, he left that in as constitutional, as long as it wasn't tied to the opening brick and mortar by the end of August.
So, but I just wanted to clarify, at this time, the state hasn't given us necessarily a promise that that won't be adjusted come spring. Is that correct?
That's correct. I think they still need to evaluate the numbers. But they did promise not to hold, they promised to hold us harmless through the fall and not to use the October survey numbers.
Right. So our funding that we'll get in the fall months, I can't remember exactly the times that it comes in. But we, you know, we'll get according to our projections from last spring. But there's, like I said, there's no promise necessarily that won't be adjusted in the spring as we get our numbers in the February count.
Right, that is correct. And so one of the things that we need to look at, if numbers do stay lower and enrollment stays lower, is to make sure that with less need for teachers, because there's less students, that we grab that lapse rate from the teachers and make sure that we save that funding in order to possibly have to pay something back after the fall.
Thank you.
Ms. Campbell, just to clarify, the difference between the district's six-day count, the first week of count, and our October counts? The state's first official count of our students is in October. We do our counts at the beginning of the year, that's an internal function to then evaluate where we may need to do some allocation adjustments in our schools. So these numbers are just done internally, they're not reported to state. That's not done until October for what's called October FTE. And then again, in February for second semester for February FTE.
Thank you.
And to your point, Ms. Campbell, they can guarantee our funding through the fall semester based on student numbers? But that doesn't guarantee that they won't make an adjustment, as Ms. Lesinski referenced.
As the legislature comes back.
There is the potential for an adjustment based on student numbers, as well as an adjustment based on state revenue as we move forward. And I think that's an important thing to...
That is a scary point.
It is a very scary point, yes.
Just to add clarification, it is a, it is a difficult year to speculate exactly what could happen. In '07-'08, there was not an adjustment to enrollment, it was a statewide budget reduction. It was a percent reduction. That's why we make the analysis or comparison to '07-'08, when there was a like $2 billion reduction in revenue, which the state has, obviously has done and could do again. Adjustments in enrollment are difficult because in our February, our February FTE calculation doesn't come back until, I want to say, or the adjustments don't come until April. So that's well, well into, three-quarters of the year into our budget, which is very difficult at that time to make budget adjustments. That's why we're monitoring it early now and carefully considering what the projections are and watching our numbers and looking closely at our schools. Our principals are working right now to reach out to their families and make contact and provide them the support that they need and understand where our numbers are. The number I, that we can, we know is impacting our enrollment is home education. That's over 1,000 students higher than it was a year ago. So there's no question that that is an accurate number. So that does have a significant impact on the enrollment in our schools and potentially future revenue.
Ms. Lesinski, do you know the balance of our, the 3.2% contingency that we have in reserves?
I'm sorry?
The dollar amount, do you know the dollar amount?
It's 19 million, I'm looking at Karen. 19.9 million.
Which, I mean, potential 22 million hit if the state reduces. We have 19 million in reserves. A potential 100 million hit mid-year. You may not be panicking.
So for all of our parents out there, and Mr. Susan, I think you make a great point that people are probably still trying to figure out what's right. But in the best interest of students, if they're not comfortable coming back into brick-and-mortar schools at this point, we would certainly encourage them to take advantage of the e-learning opportunity so that we can keep them on the same pace as their peers in the classrooms when they're ready to come back to the classroom. You know, that would be a smooth transition for them. But, you know, the bottom line is that we currently have a lot of students that we don't know where they are or what education they're getting in. So I think if we can get to a point of clearing that up, we'll be much better off. Ms. Lesinski, thank you so much for your leadership in all of this. I know it's been a trying time, and the information that you're putting forward certainly puts some additional stress on your department to figure out how to guide us going forward, but we appreciate you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Absolutely. All right, Ms. Moore is next, I think?
All right, let's see if I can find what I'm looking for. This is it? Hey, good evening, everyone, how is everybody?
Fabulous.
Thank you. I first want to start off by introducing our new assistant director for student activities, Dr. Andrew Ramjit. And so he started with us July 14, I will say, in the height of everything we were trying to do and all the controversy. So I first wanted to make sure to bring him up here. I promised him he would not have to present today for the first time. But I did want everybody to lay eyes on him and to be introduced to him and know that he has been a tremendous asset to Student Services and has really owned a lot of, all of the decision-making that we've had to do. So, so thank you personally for meeting you.
Thank you.
Before we start talking about fall athletics, I just want to talk just very briefly about return to activity. Because I would be really remiss if I did not give a personal thank you and a personal shout-out to our athletic directors. You know, everybody has opinions about the right thing to do. And what we have found as we have gone through this time that most, you know, 50% of our staff and community really wanted athletics and 50% didn't. 50% really wanted us to come back to school and 50% really didn't. It was, it is no surprise to us when we try to get some feedback and we find out that every decision we make is going to make somebody happy and somebody angry. But one of the things that we do try to do every time we make a decision is go into it eyes wide open. How do we mitigate all of the factors that could potentially cause any risk of harm or health? And we did that with our athletic directors. And we sat down with the return to activity plan, we trained them, we trained our principals, and they took it very seriously. And so as we go into our fall program, I have absolute confidence that our athletic directors and our coaches are going to take the precautions and the mitigating factors seriously as we move into our plan. It was hard work, what our athletic directors did. It was unlike anything they ever had to do before. And so if I could ask anything, a personal shout-out to some of our athletic directors at some of our schools would go a long way to letting them know how much we appreciate the protection that they took and wrapped around our students this summer. So as we go into fall athletics, we really, thank you, Andrew, we really wanted to keep a couple of things in mind. And I'm going to tell you that this presentation was already sent to the board, I'm going to say last week, early, late last week. So I'm not going through the entire presentation. I just want the community to know what's in here, it's available for them to see, it's available for them to look for their own personal interest. So I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on a whole lot of slides, but I am going to give an overview of what's in here. I think this slide is really important because it talks about, you know, why we made the decisions that we did. First off, you know, when you have a lot of people with a lot of opinions, most of them dissenting from one another, we have to go to who guides us. And in athletics, who guides us is FHSAA, the Florida High School Athletic Association. And within the Florida High School Athletic Association, they have a group called the Sports Medicine, what does AC stand for?
Advisory.
Advisory Committee. I just call them SMAC. But the Sports Medicine Advisory Committee also advised Florida athletics. And for those of you guys who don't know, as is any large organization, they had to come together and talk, and then go away and think, and come together and talk, and go away and think. And I think it was finally on the fourth meeting that they came back with the Florida sports, Florida High School sports may start as early as August 24. And that then left us to go, okay, we may start on August 24. What is best for our students? What is safest for our students? How do we build up protections and address health concerns while starting our fall athletic program? So our second consideration is that Florida High School Athletic Association kind of, kind of said, listen, as long as you play within some time periods, we're going to allow your teams to be qualified for the state athletic series. So we wanted to make sure we stayed within the parameters that our students could still be competitive within the sports, the state series. And that's important for a lot of reasons, but none of which is that, least among them is that it will allow our students to be seen on a competitive stage against some of the best in the state. And we wanted to make sure that that happened. It's not going to surprise you that not third on our list, but one of the other areas that we really wanted to pay attention to was costs. We had a big board workshop, it seems like a lifetime ago, but I think it was maybe six months ago, about the rising cost of our athletics, including a rising cost for our officials. Right, some of, some other contract language has increased how much it costs to run a sports program. So we really tried to look at ways to minimize the cost going into this year, as well as how do we minimize health and safety concerns? So that was the third thing. And then the last thing is that we really, really, really wanted to allow our students to continue to participate in sports in a way that was safe and healthy, in a way that we could mitigate risks, in a way that we could control as much as we could for the unknown. And when we get to kind of the end of the presentation, I'll talk to you a little bit about, you know, things that we're doing and concerns moving forward. Because the last thing we want is for athletics to impact instruction. And I have to be honest and frank and say that there's a possibility that that's going to happen. And I'll talk about that at the very end. So how is this presentation set up? So how is this presentation set up? In each of the fall sports, you're going to see a facing slide that talks about the stages. So stage one talks about when we had very small groups. We had less than 10 in a group. That was right up until, is today the 25th? Right up until today for football. And then we wanted to provide them about a week to two weeks to work in some larger groups. Still less than 50, still controlling the movement of equipment, still really making sure there's not physical contact. We are building up as we go into the school year. And then as we go into stage three, in every single sport, you're going to see it looks like the full FHSAA practice. It's full, full contact, full pads, full equipment. However, we are still minimizing the teams to the minimum limit for FHSAA. It does mean that some students may not have the ability to participate in sports as we have in the past, in that we're not fielding teams of 60 kids on football. Where it's minimum requirements, 50 kids, that's what we're fielding. So again, each fall sport is going to have a facing page, and each sport is then going to just have a page that talks about what their divisions look like. So some of them are divided up into Division One and Division Two based on both ability and cross-town rivals and minimizing travel. And some of them are divided into North and South. And so that was the work of our athletic directors and some of our coaches that got together and had those conversations. And you'll see to the right that we tried to maximize the number of games that we could play in the time that we had available. And in each one, you're going to see that it is in county games only. Just as a reminder, we do have a return to school plan. The return to school plan was really super specific about things. And when those things were already in place, we used those things for our athletic program. So no visitors, no visitors. No out-of-county field trips, no out-of-county athletic trips. This is actually, as I'm even looking at this PDF, there was a change to this PDF that is not accounted for here. And it says no JV to be played. We are playing JV. So that, I apologize, should have been taken off of there. We are playing JV. We have that scheduled. We're good to go on that. Parents, don't panic. I'll make sure when we upload this to the board website that it gets corrected. So again, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time, you see volleyball has the facing page, then the division page, and it is the same with all the sports. Golf, swimming, diving, cross-country, and bowling all have the same facing page because they're all on the same calendar. And then they each have different division pages. It again, talks about the matches, in-county games, and whether or not there's going to be a Cape Coast Conference championship. So golf, swimming and diving, cross-country and bowling will all have their individual pages. I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on individual sports because I know everybody has their own sport they're looking at, and it's just going to be easier for you to dive in and pull this off of the website and to look at it. Again, the only change is there is JV, JV sports in the, in the sports that have that. So here's what I just want to spend a little bit of time on. We are still holding to universal precautions. And this is really itty-bitty tiny print, but I, none of this is going to surprise anybody that's watched any of our presentations. What we try to do is decrease exposure as much as possible and increase the protections that we can give kids. A great example of that would be that when you are indoors having a team meeting, we are following the return to school mandate of school face, of face coverings. And if you are not able to socially distance. So the things in here are not going to surprise you. Again, the last two bullets are probably the ones that we've had the most people write us about and want to see, want an explanation of. And the explanation of, it's part of our return to school plan. No visitors, no out-of-county travel. Continuing, we are going to ask players and coaches and officials to screen. This is an extracurricular activity. They are choosing to be there. And so we are making sure that they are healthy as they participate. Face coverings, we already spoke about. As you see, there's going to be some things in there that you, that you think, well, I can see how that works in, you know, in golf or bowling, but I don't see how that works in football. And so what's really important to know is that our athletic directors are getting together, what day is that?
Tomorrow.
What? Tomorrow. They are getting together tomorrow and they're going to start looking at each of these sections and do some very sports-specific guidelines. So for example, face coverings on sidelines. I had a principal call me today and say, Chris, I think we have, I think we have a solution for that. You know, we're going to get those ones that are worn around the neck and the kids are going to pull them up and pull them down, and they're not going to leave their face coverings on the, on the sidelines and they're not, and they're going to have them available and they're the only ones that are going to touch them. So schools are already thinking through these mitigating factors that could protect them as much as possible. So continuing on to sidelines and benches, just like I said, it's not going to surprise you to hear, we want the least amount of people standing on the sidelines as we can possibly get, that we want to make sure that they're cleaned and that they're not sharing equipment. You know, these are the little things that we can do that could help mitigate the transmission of, of really, for those of you who have been in athletics for a long time, you know, wrestling season doesn't come and go without kids getting ringworm. Some of these protections that we have in place should probably be in place all the time anyway, because I imagine we could avoid a lot of, a lot of infection and illness if we did it. And so I think that we're starting a great precedence for future, for future needs. Locker rooms, we are going to make sure that those are clean and sanitized daily and that we are going to be looking at those high-touch surfaces. None of this is new. This is all part of the reopening plan. Locker room etiquette, we had a couple of phone calls saying, I really want my child to be able to shower and dress. You know, they're going to be able to do that. We're discouraging it. If they are able, we would much rather them go home, use their shower at home, you know, leave their dirty clothes and sweaty clothes at home. But we do understand that, you know, for example, cross-country runs early in the morning and they're probably going to want to avail themselves of the locker room facilities before they go onto school. So it's available, just discouraged. But we do want to make sure that our coaches are really monitoring how many people are going in and using those things. Travel, I have spoken about. We are going to follow the same bus transportation guidelines as we have in the return to school plan. And I think that could be everybody's kind of, kind of running through their head as we start talking about athletic decisions. The very first document that we go back to is, what does it say in the return to school plan? We can't have one rule for, for instruction and another rule for athletics. Game day staff, we wanted to make sure that our officials understood that when they come onto our campuses and they are working with us, that we hold them to the same standards that we do our coaches and our kids. And our venues are going to be, oh, there it is. Our venues, we wanted to make sure to take care of letting our cheerleaders, our dance teams, our mascots all know they're welcome, but they are not welcome in the small area in which our players are to be. So for example, on a sideline, there's a box along the football sideline and the players have to stay in that box. We don't need any extra people in there. We don't need, we don't need the cheerleaders in there. We don't need, we don't need anybody else in there. So we're going to make sure that that, that we practice social distancing as best we can on the sidelines as well. Venues are going to be filled to 25% capacity, and schools are going to be monitoring that and figuring that out. We are going to ask spectators who come to attest that they are, that they are answering the COVID verbal screening questions. They, these questions will be posted at each venue. We are asking spectators to wear face coverings. We are telling spectators they are not allowed on the fields during, during events, before or after the events. And if they are congregating in a small area, we are asking them to move away from one another in those areas. Just like some other events that we have had, we are asking our spectators to practice social distancing in the stands. They can stay with their direct family parties, but other than that, we want them to be socially distancing. And we are going to make sure that there's signage about that. So like Andrew said, we are going to have a sports-specific guideline meeting starting tomorrow, and we believe we have all the right people in the room for that. Oh, this is the wrong, I sent the right PowerPoint slide and then, no, let me correct. I sent the wrong PowerPoint slide, which is this one. And then I sent the right PowerPoint slide, and then I opened the wrong one. So I do, we do have marching band guidelines. The one that I will send you, we'll make sure that you have that so that you are able to see what the marching band guidelines are. In fact, I think the one I sent you had the right one, the marching band guidelines. Finally, the middle school. I've had a lot of questions about middle school. Andrew's been working with the athletic directors for the past two days. They, we now have 16 athletic, middle school athletic directors that have 100% consensus on what the plan is. So we're going to be bringing that to Dr. Mullins tomorrow, and I'm sure he'll be sharing it out to you. But what I really wanted to end with was the work that our coaches and our athletic directors have to do. So as many of you are aware, as well as having athletics fall under Student Services, so too does the Department of Health and much of our COVID response. And so we have been actively involved in what it looks like when we have a case, what it looks like when we have a contact to a case, and the impact that it might have on our buildings. And so what, what is absolutely essential is that our coaches can tell us who's playing and where and when. Our athletic directors are able to get that information to us quickly. And that our parents, when their children are ill, don't send them to school. Or when there is a case in the home, they don't send them to school. When you talk about a case in a school, our schools have been set up to really minimize the impact of that case on the school. If they're practicing social distancing and we have a case in the school, one or two kids might be impacted if we're following all of our guidelines. It might be more depending on what kind of activities are going on in that school or the type of class. But when you're talking about sports, one student is going to impact 20 to 30 to 50 students. And so everything that we put in place is to minimize that from happening. But one student showing up for the good of the team, one parent wanting to see their child play in a cross-town rival game, will shut a program down for a minimum of three weeks. Two weeks for quarantine and one week for conditioning. And so it behooves all of our parents, all of our coaches, all of our athletic directors to really understand that the pieces that we're putting to place, we're putting to place in order to keep kids playing and safe and healthy, but most, okay, healthy is most important, but second to that is to keep our schools open and running and instructing. Because those 20 to 30 to 40 athletes who are impacted are also students in our buildings. And they will be quarantined from instruction, they will be home, and we will end up waiting to see if there's a breakthrough case which could possibly close a school. So we take these things very seriously. I've spoken to the athletic directors about taking it all very seriously, and I know based on their reaction that they do, based on the work they did over the summer, that they do. And I think that's, I don't want to, want to stop this presentation on a negative note, but I think it's actually positive that our coaches and our, and our principals and our athletic directors understand the trust that our community has put in them and have stepped up to that plate. And we will continue to monitor that and address each issue as it arises and make sure that we are protecting the safety and health of our, our whole community by doing so.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. Any board members have questions or comments? Ms. McDougal?
Well, first I want to thank you and all of our athletic directors and our coaches because I have been communicating with them at various times, so thank you very much. Could you please, once again, tell our community where they will find this information? I just want to make sure that they, because I have people say, I can't find something. So if you could just, again, let our community know where to find this.
Well, sure. As soon as I make sure I have the right one, we'll be posting it on our Student Services page. Right now, it's going to be just posted on the board agenda, and then we're going to be posting it on the Student Services page. So if you go to the Student Services page, we'll make sure it's up front and center on that page. I know that one of the things Andrew said on his first day here was, how come I don't have an athletics page? And I said, I don't know, why don't you make one? And so I know that that's in his list. Unfortunately, we've kept him really hopping since his first day here. So as soon as he gets a little breathing room, he'll, he's going to add an athletic page attached to our Student Services page.
Great, thank you.
Can we also ask Ms. Hensley to post that on the COVID?
[inaudible]
Oh, woo-hoo.
Okay, thank you.
Good. And I know for a fact she has the right one, so that's good.
Mr. Susan, I think you had questions for Ms. Moore?
Yeah, thank you so much for the time. I really appreciate it. You did kind of skip over the marching band guidelines. Can you, since the public's watching, can you kind of walk us through that?
Yes, if you let me load them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I didn't know if you just wanted to do it from a 30,000-foot view.
Listen, there's so much going through this brain right now, I try not to store any of it.
In the interim, while Ms. Moore is pulling up the additional PowerPoint presentation, Andrew, I would just like to say welcome very much to the team and thank you for not turning around and running when you realized the insane time that you were joining that particular team. We appreciate all that you're doing because we certainly do understand the impact of athletics to our ability to educate students as a whole. And so we appreciate all the support that you're giving to our school-based athletic directors and coaches and making sure that we can do this as safely as possible. Thank you so very much.
Andrew, that's all great, what she just said, but is that an FSU mask you're wearing? Okay, that's, that's much better than everything she just said. Thank you.
Priorities.
I think that was his introduction, introduction to Dr. Mullins as well. So I'm going to slow down and talk about marching band a little bit. Thank you for, for forcing me to go back in, and it's, it is in the presentation. So as some of you guys who have had students in band know, not all of them want to march, but they all have to march. It is part of the curriculum of band. And so this year and this year only, marching is going to be optional for students. We don't want parents to get used to that. It is part of the program, it is part of the curriculum, it is the expectation, but for this year and this year only. Band directors, in consultation with their principals, will have the opportunity to consult about their level of participation, meaning how many kids are going to go out onto the field or not, how many kids are, how many performances they're going to do or not. Every single band program is different. And some are going to be heavily, you know, they, they may have a great drum section and they may want to do, go everywhere because drum is safe and, you know, there's no respiratory droplets in drum. And so they're going to work a different program than maybe a school that has a heavy horn section. And, and I've just pretty much exhausted my knowledge of musical instruments. So jump in anytime you want.
You did pretty good.
We are going to maintain social distancing guidelines per the instrument used. Our new music person, I don't know that she's been introduced to you guys, her name is Minnie Orr. She, yes!
Oh.
There you go.
Great choice.
She's wonderful. I will tell you, she came down to my office, she was smart, she was decisive, she was on it. She had great feedback from the band directors and it, most of this, the vast majority of it came from recommendations from the band directors. So she has been using the UC Boulder study for determining what the guidelines are going to be per instrument, and so that has already been shared with our marching bands. Each school is going to have to determine how they're sitting and performing in the stands. You know, some bands are really bigger than others, and they may want to be in the stands, some may want to be on the field, some may want to come out and perform and leave. So, you know, it's hard for us to dictate that from on high, and so we want our band directors to work with our schools in determining that. Although volunteers are prohibited with the reopening plan, we do ask that our, our teams have a we do ask that our, our teams have a chaperone of, of one to, I think it's one to 10, if my memory serves me correctly, because these kids are going to be in the stands and they do need to be, I mean, they're lovely. Band kids are lovely. But, you know, all kids, when they get together, need a little supervision. And so we are going to allow chaperones for those events. Listen, I don't know what protective coverings for bells of brass and wooden instruments are, but Minnie did and so we will make sure that, that we use those. We will ask that marching bands wear masks at all times when, when playing wind instruments, when social distancing is not possible. Again, Mr. Susan, I have no idea what that looks like, but Minnie seemed certain that it could happen and I trust her. Band directors will work with principals on the schedule for custodial services because as you guys know, when a band performs at, at a halftime show, they, they, they take up, you know, the band room, the chorus room, the hallway, and then they're out at the football game the entire time. And they may still be in those same rooms at 11:00 PM. So we really want our band directors to work with our principals to say, "I need a custodial staff, you know, to be in here first thing Monday morning because I'm going to have kids in here first thing Monday morning." And so we have asked for that to happen. We do know that bands run concession. We wanted them to be able to continue to do so if they desire to do so. But we do want them to coordinate with BPS Food Services to determine if there's any new food safety guidelines. Period at the end of that sentence. And bands will not be going to away games. And that was by consensus with the band directors. So that's what we have right now for band. I will tell you that with all things COVID, and I consider this COVID, as we get into it, we discover things that we missed, things that we forgot, things that we have to ruminate on. This was no different. We put this out and immediately I got a text that said, "Hey, what about middle school sports?" And I acted like I remembered. And then I said, "Hey, listen, we're on it. We're on it. We're talking about it tomorrow." And we did. And we were. And we have a plan ready to go by tomorrow.
Awesome. So I had a quick question because this came up and part of the discussion was, if I'm a coach that's normally on board at the band and I'm not paid, are we allowing, sometimes, like on football, we had coaches that literally were just great guys. They said, "Hey, I don't need to take a supplement." They'd been there 10 years and I'm sure it's the same way in the band. Are we allowing that to be the chaperone?
Chaperone is determined by the band director as it fits within our district security guidelines.
Okay. And then in the event that there's a way that, say, the, the, say that the issue is, is that, and I'm just speaking out, one of the things we used to do was you could take and divide your supplements, I think. So like if I'm a, if you wanted to give two coaches on the freshman staff, you could give them a, one of the freshman supplements and divide it in half, maybe? Would that signify if they wanted to divide one of the supplements to allow more people to be a part of the band?
I would have to refer that question to Dr. Thede.
Okay. But that is the sign, I guess that's the difference is that you're saying that unless they're paid, they're out. But if they are paid a supplement, that they can be a part of the band?
Well, they're really, I don't want to get into supplements, but I, they're, they, they do have a supplement for an assistant band director and for a band director, but oftentimes what they're paying in band is not a supplement. It's a stipend based on instrument and, and they pay somebody to come in and help. It's not a supplement through our HR.
Yeah, sorry. I, I just thought of that while you were doing that. And then the decision's left up to the school on what they want to put on their field, what they want to do. That's all up to the school. And from what I'm sounding like, it sounds like there's only going to be one band that actually plays at every game because the visiting team's no longer going to be traveling.
That is correct.
Okay. And then, okay, so that's good on marching band. Now, we all know that 25% is going to reduce the cost and we're going to be in a financial need for our athletic programs. And we know that football pays for all the other athletic programs. Dr. Mullins, you want to speak to where we're going with that?
Yes, I've already met with Ms. Moore and we're looking at analyzing gate receipts from past years and the projected costs of this season because it's shorter and truncated and not as comprehensive. So we're doing an analysis to determine what assistance our teams would, would need to accommodate this season.
Got it. And then what time would that, just as an idea, maybe you don't have an answer, but I know that a lot of the operational needs of each one of these athletic programs is pretty quick, right? So if there's any way to make those decisions based upon the need of the schools on what they're going to get, you know what I mean? That would be good, too.
Well, just as a reminder, all of our schools start off without those gates. So they are, they're, they're operating now, as they always have, on last year's funds. So they're not starting behind, other than they wouldn't have had spring gate.
Right.
But as you said, spring gate doesn't drive athletic programs. It's fall gate.
Absolutely.
And so, yeah, they're, they're, they're not operating from behind right now, but they will be as they move into the winter sports.
One of the issues, though, that I would, I would, I would bring to the attention is that they haven't been able to fundraise at all. And our booster clubs are the ones that drive the cost. I mean, if we look at the athletic budget and the gate as a percentage of what the athletics and activities are playing, it's a small fraction of what they go and fundraise for, right? And they haven't been able to fundraise at all. So literally, they're flatlined right now, programs, everything. So I know that in a normal environment, we would wait until the gates and everything else. But there is a sense of urgency. And I know, Andrew, you know about that and everything else. And I'm sure those athletic directors, they're like the Somali warlords. I know that they, they make their issues when they need it. But if it's a board, I, I would say that that would be an issue for me. And then 25%, are we sticking there? Or is there like a metric that says that we can open it to 50? I had some questions on that. I, I didn't know what your thoughts were there.
Just like the reopening plan, we're going to be evaluating it at the semester.
Okay, so each semester it might be an opportunity or throughout, hey, we're, we can move, open up. Okay. And then the temperature checks was interesting. Do they, are they allowed to opt out of that? Or is that something that they, they're forced to do?
Yeah, this is an extracurricular activity. So they are choosing to participate as opposed to a school, which they are mandated by state law to participate in. So, yeah, we are doing temperature checks.
Okay. And then you were right about, when you talked about the ringworm from FSU, or, I mean, I'm sorry. When you talked about the ringworm, FSU said, FSU said, what they had said was, "They have not done anything in the last eight years differently to deal with the COVID." They are doing the exact same thing that they've done in the past. So I, I did want to say that, that you're 100% right. But it brings me to the other level is, is that we need to make sure, because I know that the, I, I, I mean, ringworm, staff, everything that's inside those things. Some of these kids don't wash their uniforms for like weeks. And they, I mean, are we going to be able to allow them, as part of the COVID revenue, to purchase the cleaning and the sanitizing and all the stuff that they need inside there? Are we allowing the athletic teams COVID money for those sanitation needs?
We did not budget that.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean that we can't look at it with new funds.
Do you need anything, do we need to have a discussion? Because I, when I was, when I was looking at that, that seemed like one of the areas that was a cause for concern for me was them not having the needs and, and things that they have inside that room to sanitize. Because those kids coming in, one of the things that FSU does is that they use a mister and everything else.
Yeah, I want to clarify. I'm sorry, and I don't mean to interrupt.
No, no, no.
Because I was in, in my brain, I was still on the dirty laundry piece. But yes, they, we actually did budget for additional cleaning supplies for sports. Matter of fact, the way we even figured out how much to, how many thermometers to give and how many was based on kind of sports and what was happening in the summer. So, yeah, they, they do have supplies. I imagine they're going to need more supplies. The schools have gotten a, a separate budget. And again, we just got some additional CARES Act money that, that may or may not. I don't know where we're at with that. When is that due, Dr. Sullivan? Do you know? She's, she's, she's not happy with me. I'm sorry, Dr. Sullivan.
It's okay. I didn't, I didn't mean to.
I'm giving her an evil eye, that's true.
She is, I'm so sorry.
So the cleaning allocations and supplies were by schools, primarily by classrooms and by space. And so we would expect that all schools would use their general COVID-related things in spaces like weight rooms and things like that because that's part of the school experience. And so there was not an extra allocation for athletics in, out of our CARES Act because it was not designed that way. The CARES Act was primarily for resuming school. Separately, we did receive CARES Act number five a week ago that was designed to offset the DOE's overexpectation that much of PPE could be reimbursed by FEMA. Last Thursday, they recognized, last Thursday, Dr. Mullins, they recognized that they overstated that and basically were wrong. And so we received a much smaller allocation. Right now, our BPS allocation is about 771,000 and I have about 1.6 million already encumbered. And so basically, we'll be moving some of what we expected from FEMA reimbursement over to the CARES Act number five, which we are affectionately calling the CPR Fund. But that's going to really offset some of what we've already purchased. That, that, I'm sorry, one more. That being said, Ms. Moore is correct. The schools were given individual allocations to buy additional supplies and we've bought tons of them and wanted to remind you that each school did get a mister. And so there would be no reason why that school shouldn't use those mister in those common spaces like the band rooms and the locker rooms and things like that. So those spaces aren't excluded. In our mind, they're part of the school. So we would expect them to be using those misters quite regularly in those large common spaces.
Thank you. Yeah, because when we, we had an outbreak at Space Coast and we decided that we were, this was not an outbreak of COVID, but back in the day, we had staff and we had some other stuff. And the, the coaches were using buckets of bleach and it rusted out all the clips. As long as we're not going that route and a lot of them have the available things that they need to do it properly, I commend you.
So I just wanted to say, although Dr. Sullivan gave me the evil eye, I think it should be said, she has borne the, the heavy load of the CARES Act and the next CARES and the next CARES and the next CARES. And nobody knows it better than she does. So I defer to her expertise. She has been outstanding.
Awesome. And then I think one of the things that I noticed is that, when I was coaching before, some of the kids, just for something to keep an eye on, some of the kids, that was the only shower they got. And they, they, they needed that, you know? So if we don't make it so hard on them, some of those kids, that's all that went before they go home, you know? They bring their clothes. So just something to think about. And then I'd also like, possibly in the next school board meeting, to talk about the media. I would like to talk about what access that looks like and everything else because we have some really good programs, all the way from Florida today, and other options that we'd like to cover some of our sports. And being the fact that now 25% aren't out there, we need to give them as many options as possible. That's all. So just something to think about. And I'm good. And I wanted to say thank you for everything that you put together. Thanks for keeping our kids playing and trying to come up with options to keep them safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Any other, Ms. Campbell?
So first of all, since a question was asked, how do you, you know, how is band going to work? I'll just tell you that I just got a text from my daughter a little while ago. "Hey, Mom, on the way home, can you pick up some hosiery to go over the end of my instrument?" So, and then our band directors are being very creative in having mothers and families build, I'm going to say mothers could be fathers, too, families sew little bags to put your clarinet and saxophone in. It's very interesting. You should Google it. It's, it's wild. Oh, and also, "Mom, I need a mask that I can cut a slit in so I can play my instrument through the slit." So they're getting very creative. And all that is based off that, the Boulder study has been making its way around all the music rooms. So thank you. I don't necessarily have a question, but I just want to add to what you said. I, I very much appreciate the, the athletic directors and the coaches taking this seriously. I just want to put out the challenge to our students and families. Because the truth is, there is what we must do as a district, which is educate kids. And there's what we don't really have to do, which is athletics. And, but it is very important. You know, I'm, I'm a band orchestra choir mom, but those are extracurriculars as well and I understand the value of our kids' belongings and learning the team and adulting and all kinds of things that they learn. And so, but I just, you know, we've, we've, I've had some comments, "Oh, hey, well, if the NBA and the NFL and NCAA, well, let's just, let's just talk about some numbers." Just so you know, my husband's a huge sports fan, so he was a good resource for me. The NBA is spending $150 million to be in their bubble in Orlando. The NFL has boatloads of money and they have put their own testing site at all 32 team sites. And so they test every day and they test, you know, and they're going through all that and getting the results back immediately. So, you know, money, right? And, and they're adults and they can, they, that's our focus. The NCAA, I actually was really pleased to see several interviews in the last few weeks of some college athletes and coaches. I won't mention the teams because I don't want to be boo. But one of them was Alabama. But who talked about what they're doing. These athletes want to play so badly. They want this season to come off here in the SEC and the ACC, who are actually having a season, that they have said, "We go to class, we go to practice, and we go home." And they're taking it seriously because they want to play so bad. They know how seriously, how serious it is. And so they're going to class, they're going to practice, and they're going home. And I'd like to think that our high school athletes and our middle school athletes would have the same level of seriousness. That's a lot of faith. So we're going to take, it's going to take our families to join them. And the other thing is, our college athletes, when they go, when they say they go home, they, they generally go to live, you know, to their apartment where they live by themselves or their dorm, or they go to an athletic dorm, like the football players all live and study and work together. They're, they're not going back to families who are all, in general, who are also going all, all different places. So I just, so that our, our athletes and our families really understand the impact that they would have that could actually shorten their season or eliminate it or, you know, worse, have disruption to our, our schools. We just, I just implore all our athletes and their families to take this absolutely serious. Because we, if we want to have this, we want to have it successfully, it is going to be dependent on their behavior, not only in practice and on the field, but at home. And so please take your cue from our professional and college-level athletes and, and just realize what you do outside of school and outside of practice is greatly going to affect how we do school and how we do practice and games. And so I just really want our, our families, all the ones who have contacted me, I've tried to add that into my email. There's some I've got still sitting in my inbox, just say, "Hey, we need you. We need you to help. If this is going to be successful, you've got to be on board." So, but thank you. Thank you for the work that you have done and your team and your new protege here, right? For all things athletics and student services. Very much appreciate the work that you've done.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Anyone else have questions, comments for Ms. Moore?
I will just say thank you so very much. I know that you have been, you've been carrying a lot through this. And I know you've been very dedicated to making sure that we are making the decisions that keep us as safe as possible. So we appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. We are now at public comments in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Speakers could record comments through advanced registration or maybe here in person. If we already have 30 public attendees inside the boardroom, additional speakers may be waiting outside, which I do not believe we do. So we have seven speakers scheduled in person this evening and then we have one recorded comment. So our first three speakers will be Robert Ray, Brian Watts, and Anthony Calucci. Mr. Ray, if you'd like to approach the microphone in the center, please say.
Dr. Mullins, thanks. I'm Robert Ray. I'm one of your substitute teachers. And the last time I was here, I asked what can we do to prepare better? And Dr. Thede and her team prepared a beautiful PowerPoint presentation just in time for us to start work. Anyway, so thank you for that PowerPoint presentation. It really helped out. I just thought I'd tell you a little bit about what happened the last two days. I'm on an extended AP history assignment over at Cocoa Beach High. And first of all, my room, it was really fantastic. There were 21 desks. They were nicely placed apart. And I took a measurement of the room. It was 30 by 30. So it was really good. And it was more than adequate for all the students that I had. And I was really pleased when it went in this morning. Everything had been cleaned very, very nicely. A few things had been moved, but it was okay. Also, the 90-minute blocks that they're doing for the secondary schools is really, really a very effective thing. It's really nice to be able to stretch out an activity and, you know, for 90 minutes as opposed to what usually happens. The masks, the kids have been fantastic about the masks. I, a lot of peer pressure going on. If somebody doesn't have their mask on, like I don't right now, the other kids will say, "Hey, you know, put your mask on," which is really, really good. The sanitizers, there, there's sanitizers in my room and I'm really, I, I tell the kids to use them. I'm not so certain that it's it's really happening all the way in, in all of the areas of, I didn't see much anyway. As far as social distancing is concerned, very, very good. The kids really take, take care to stay six feet apart, and it's really nice to be back. Thank you. It's been a long since March. It's just nice to be working with kids again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Watts?
Hi. Good afternoon. Can I turn this? Good afternoon. I recently applied for the substitute teacher position. I've had some issues with the process. Just wanted to be clear that, I, I substituted in Orlando, so I thought it would be challenging. I'm not doing anything, haven't worked for a few years, I'm retired. So it indicated that you needed supervisor references, and I was advised that was a statute. I had emails, I traded with Beth Fettie, and then she had, I also spoke with Cordia Patterson. So we got past the requirement for supervisors. The statute doesn't say that, but that's fine. So then I had an issue with, I don't have my high school diploma, so I got a letter emailed to me from my high school in New York, and that was not accepted. So I understand you have a shortage of substitutes, and I'm just advising you that, you know, the pay isn't very high, I wasn't doing it for the money, but, you know, these little challenges is going to make it difficult for almost anybody. So I'm retired for a few years, I was with the police department for over 30 years in New York, so even getting supervisor references, that wasn't possible for that position. So I'm just saying, this is what I've run into. So the application is probably going to list, be listed as incomplete. I did the online test, all of that stuff. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, as well as, well, the salary is, I was doing it for the money, but the, the salary is just inadequate. So I just wanted to mention that. Since I was here and I saw your budget presentation, I will say that that is a little concerning, that you have an actual and a, and a projected difference of 14,000 students. So I think the questions that some of you folks are raising are legitimate. So I hope the board, and as was, I didn't come here for this, but I hope the board will be proactive. And when you get real numbers, I mean, I think it's a stretch to think you're going to find 13,000 students. So all I'm saying is, I know how budgeting works, and you don't want to wait till the last minute, you might want to start planning, because nobody likes surprises, and I'm sure the districts don't, I'm sure the students and the teachers aren't going to be happy either. You know, taxes are fine, I'm okay with taxes going up a little bit, but nobody likes surprises, and I think that is a little area of concern. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Watts, we appreciate you coming. Mr. Calucci?
My name is Anthony Calucci. I'm the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Yesterday, Circuit Judge Charles Dodson granted the Florida Education Association's motion for a temporary injunction against Florida Education Commissioner Richard Corcoran's executive order. In his decision, the judge noted, "The order is unconstitutional to the extent it arbitrarily disregards safety, denies local school boards' decision-making with respect to reopening brick-and-mortar schools, and conditions funding on an approved reopening plan with a start date in August." The judge noted that the evidence was clear that teachers want to get back in school, but teachers are being told they must go back into the classroom in unsafe conditions. There are some signs that the spread of COVID in Brevard is heading in the right direction, and that is good news. However, science tells us, with schools reopening, our numbers are likely to start heading in the wrong direction. While the case will continue to be argued in court, I'm calling on this board to direct staff to start developing contingency plans that could offer more than just brick and mortar or e-learning. We strongly believe that it is time for the board to have a staggered schedule plan in place. If we get to a situation where this board can actually decide for itself without the state threatening to take funding, a staggered schedule appears to be a way to offer mitigation efforts such as social distancing, bubbles, and contact tracing, while still providing some face-to-face instruction and the ability to meet students' social, emotional, and physical needs. We asked that this plan was developed months ago, but it was overshadowed by the Governor and Commissioner of Education bullying districts into five days a week of brick-and-mortar. Do not wait, develop this plan in case our numbers start heading in the wrong direction. A neutral judge said five days a week disregard safety. Because this board chose to comply with this order, it can be said that you've disregarded safety. If, if FEA ultimately prevails in the lawsuit, the Brevard County School Board will not be able to point a finger at the governor. It will be solely your decision that puts kids and staff in harm's way. While we are still in brick-and-mortar five days a week, I cannot stress enough, not only to our teachers, but to our entire community, do not let your guards down. We are smarter than the virus, but the virus is more patient than we are. Wear your mask, social distance, proper, practice proper hygiene, and stay home if you're sick. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calucci. Next up, we have Mr. Savage, Ms. Skipper, Mr. Hilliard, and then our last in-person speaker will be Laura DePaul. Mr. Savage?
Thank, oh, I don't even want to touch this.
Do we have, Sessibar, could we get a wipe for you, please?
Nah, you're, you're good, Ms. Belford, thank you.
You can have my hand sanitizer when you're done, Mr. Savage.
I made it worse. Sorry, Dr. Mullins.
Where'd you get this from?
I really appreciate it. This is going to make this more uncomfortable now. Thank you, Ms. Belford. Thank you to the board. Thank you, Dr. Mullins. I needed that. I just want to start out by saying, my two sons started school yesterday at Capeview Elementary, and I felt like a kindergarten parent all over again. I was nervous that they were going to be safe. I was nervous that they were going to have a good time. I was nervous that they were going to want to go back tomorrow. So I just want to give a huge shout-out to our teachers in Brevard, because they made my kids have a wonderful day. I didn't know what to do on Tuesday, they knew they wanted to go back to school. And because of our teachers, and I know that just didn't happen in two classrooms, that happened in classrooms all throughout Brevard. So a huge shout-out to our teachers, and our elementary leading in learning, secondary leading in learning has done a lot, so thank you. Um, I'm going to change up my speech a little bit. Looking at those enrollment numbers, there's a problem. Like, we can hope 13, 14,000 kids are coming back, but I'm a season ticket holder for Orlando City. I still have season tickets for this season. They are sending me emails to try to go to a game tomorrow. Guess where I'm not going tomorrow? To a game because I don't feel safe. So we have to do everything possible to make our schools feel safe. If we, we can argue if COVID, the mortality rate of COVID, how many people die from COVID, it doesn't matter. If somebody doesn't feel safe, they're not going to go to our schools. So I intended to come up here and talk about how in the CARES grant, there's about $4 million that was just held for, the exact word in was, uh, held for, uh, held in reserve at the state on our behalf so that we can revisit once the funding picture is more clear. We need to spend every dollar available for PPE for our class. Right now, I believe the district gets about 80% reimbursement from FEMA on PPE. Is that wrong now? You get zero?
Uh, Dr. Sullivan can address that directly.
Well, I'll keep speaking because I know that's not appropriate, I'm sorry. Um, we need to be doing everything possible. If a teacher needs desk partitions, we need to be looking at that. I do know every teacher got one partition to start school, but I don't think that's adequate. If teachers need more thermometers, we need to be doing that. If we can check temperatures for football, I'm sure we can check temperatures on more of our students when they come in. Because at the end of the day, our families need to be safe. In some ways, we need to look at it as a rush on our business. If our, every student that comes in, yes, we need to care for our students, but on the budget side, that's money. So we need to be doing everything possible. And I think missing that many students just says that our reopening plan kind of missed the point a little bit, and we need to revisit that and see how we can attract parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage, we appreciate you. Ms. Skipper?
Good evening, members of the board. First of all, I just want to say, that lawsuit win wasn't just our win, I feel like it was your win too. Because the one thing that really irritated me about that executive order is, I knew it was unconstitutional because you guys are elected to do a job, and you were hamstringed into making decisions when you should have been able to do what was right for our district. But that's not actually my speech tonight. Um, our teachers are doing what they probably never imagined they would do. And while they are all stepping up to the plate to do this hybrid approach to e-learning with kids in the classroom at the same time, I'm watching what's happening at home because my son is doing e-learning. While at the same time, I'm getting phone calls and emails, teachers are frustrated, not because they think it's too much work, even though they do, but because they don't believe that they're going to be able to give their students the same educational experience that they have in the past. And they feel like those kids that are e-learning may be missing out because they're not able to, in a sense, be to places at once. We could do a lot better for students and for teachers if we had a complete one-to-one district. Because the students in the classroom could be online with the students at home using Zoom, and everybody could be having the same experience. I was a little discouraged, although I want to say I'm completely in support of renewing the half cent, I was very discouraged to hear that a good bit of that was not going to go to putting one-to-one in our classrooms. I want to read you a quote from the superintendent in Indianapolis Public Schools, who said this about their decision to be ready to go one-to-one right now. Said this in March. "It's a massive investment, the right investment, but a massive investment. We know that in the fall, we need to be very nimble and flexible and prepared to exist in both the virtual home learning world and hopefully in, in our, our school facility world. And to do that well, it requires each of our students to have access to technology. We have students who are getting computers sent home to them for e-learning that don't have webcams or audio. We have a principal who said, 'If you don't have a computer at home, then you should be here attending school.'" I don't see how these parents are going to actually vote for extending a tax if we're not actually providing things that we should be providing them at home, and making them successful in the classroom and at home, and making our teachers' jobs not only easier, but allow them to feel that they're reaching every student. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper. Mr. Hilliard?
Good evening. I'm Jonathan Hilliard, second vice president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. I really want to recognize our teacher heroes this evening. They are the ones that are the backbone of this entire situation that we're dealing with in our school systems. They're the ones that are making this whole thing work. The load falls on them. I'd like to read a, a quick leadership quote. It says, "One of the tests of leadership is the ability to recognize a problem before it becomes an emergency." One of the things that the leadership that we provided from Brevard Federation of Teachers was 500 KN95 masks for our teachers before they entered the school. We wanted to make sure our teachers were protected. We wanted to make sure that they felt safe going into harm's way. Another thing that we did, we're providing 150 Plexiglas carousels, just like the kind that we used to use with FSA testing, the testing carousels, about 24 inches high. We're going to provide these so that resource teachers, ESC teachers, can do one-to-one instruction with our students and provide that academic support. One of the other things that is very concerning right now, and Ms. Skipper had brought it up, is our teachers are receiving computers without audio or video capabilities. I had a teacher call me about this, and she said, this is how she learned about it. She learned about it from a, a parent who actually was an IT person, and they said, "You know that the computer that you gave my child doesn't have video capability or a speaker or a microphone?" And she was like, "Well, let me look into this." And she looked into it, and she found out that the district said, "Oh, yes, we know that that's going out, but we expect you to just live chat with those kids." That's the stress that our teachers are under. And Ms. Skipper alluded to it. What stresses our teachers out the most is their passion and desire to provide that high-quality education to their students that they've been accustomed to providing, but now they feel hand-tied. That's one issue that's going on. Another is the class size. I had a first-grade teacher tell me, Jonathan, 24 kids face-to-face in my class. Now, she's a veteran teacher. She knows what she's getting into. She knows how to organize her classroom, but she tells me, "I can't do social distancing, and these are six-year-old babies. We sing, I've got them, you know, trying to wear their masks, but they can't do it because they're, they're just six." That's what's going on right now. I'm, I'm very happy that we've all been optimistic, but these are the real concerns going on in our schools right now with our teachers. So we need that leadership to see and recognize that problem before it becomes an emergency. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hilliard. And our final in-person speaker this evening is Laura DePaul.
No, it's too high. I don't want it. Thank you. Thank you for having me. I have waited months to be here in front of you. We are a Merritt Island family. I have three elementary-age children attending Tropical Elementary this year in person. We moved to New Hampshire last year for one year, and while we were there, I started substitute teaching. I loved it. I told myself I will do it till my youngest, who starts kindergarten this month, graduates. So for the next 12, 13 years, she will be in school, I will be a substitute teacher for you consistently. I have a great background, I'm passionate about it. I have made so many memories as a substitute, the one year I did it in New Hampshire, that it made me want to do it full-time. But I'm not sure that the, I know you guys all know, but the general public probably doesn't realize, in Brevard County, I get, I will get paid less than McDonald's. You base the pay on your background in New Hampshire, and I'm not sure that anyone would even know how other states operate. They're very fairly paid equally. Doesn't matter where you came from, if you passed your background check and you're reliable. They have a flat pay, they pay $37.50 for a half-day, $75 for a full-day, and they offer full-day substitutes a free lunch. I loved it. I was happy with that. I was a full-day sub. It wasn't big money, but it was better than making minimum wage. I truly believe we are not further from minimum wage, and right now during coronavirus, something has changed. Low-risk, reliable substitute teachers should be considered essential workers. There are teachers, I'm being told, on Merritt Island are looking for safer lines of work. I would show up and sub for them every single day confidently, but if you have a high school diploma, for anyone out there listening, families at home, $8.56 an hour- $8.56 an hour, here's the real shocker. I have an associate's degree, plenty of other careers in the past. I was a stay-at-home mom. Now I want to be part of the school district and do more than just volunteer, but I'm making $8.75 an hour. This is what bothers me. In Brevard County, if I had a bachelor's degree, most likely I'd be looking for full-time work. I know people, friends of mine, moms in the community, same county as I, same availability, making $4 more an hour. Why? Why am I getting paid $4 an hour less than a bachelor's degree? But with a high school diploma, I'm making 20 cents more than a high school diploma. It's like, I can't understand. There's a shortage of subs? I've talked to-
Ms. DePaul, thank you so much for joining us this evening. I'm sorry, but we're limited to three minutes per speaker. That's your alarm going off there.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, I just, I hope you guys can come up with a solution.
Thank you, and thank you for supporting our schools. We appreciate it. Okay, and we have one call-in speaker that we still need to hear from this evening?
In consideration of the current health and safety concerns during the COVID-19 emergency, guidance from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, as well as Executive Order 20-91 issued by Governor Sanders, it is necessary to modify our procedures for public comment. Tonight, your comments will be recorded and we will play them back under the public comment section of the board meeting tomorrow. Our speaker is limited to three minutes. Our moderator will keep track of your time and ask you to conclude your comments when you have reached three minutes. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times. Please keep your comments appropriate for our children who may be watching or listening from home. Before speaking, please state your name, the organization you represent, if any, and identify the topic you will be discussing. We won't be answering questions on tonight's call, but our staff will follow up with you if you have a question or need a response. Ben, please go ahead with our speaker.
All right, thank you. So go ahead and press zero now, and Donna will bring you through to make your comment. Go ahead and press zero now, and Donna will bring you through to make your comment. Okay, Kathy, go ahead and state your first and last name and your comment, please.
Yes, my name is Kathy West. My question is, right now, do they plan on paying teachers and staff for hazard pay? Because we're going into the classroom in a crisis situation where we're already in this situation and this just adds to the issue. And also, we've been waiting on, subs have been waiting on a raise that we keep, we have kept being told that it's on their radar. It's been on their radar for a whole year. There has been no pay increase in that year. All I've heard is lip service for the past year. Nothing has been done. And now we're in another crisis, facing two crises, and nothing's been done.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment. Go ahead, soon close out.
Okay, thank you, Ms. West. Appreciate your comments tonight, and we'll play that back for the school board tomorrow night's meeting under the public comment section. So thank you very much, and thank you, Ben. Good night.
Good night.
All right, that concludes our public comments for this evening. Did any board member wish to respond, give direction, anything like that on any of the public speakers this evening? I will ask, Dr. Mullins, I'll ask you, and since you are up here and your mic is a little bit clear, but if you need to punt to Dr. Sullivan, please feel free. Mr. Savage had brought up the FEMA reimbursement, and it was discussed a little bit when Ms. Moore was at the mic. But I think that's kind of important for our public to understand what happened there with the FEMA reimbursement. Is that something that you can speak to, or?
Yeah, well, I could give it an attempt, but Dr. Sullivan certainly is most familiar with the process. Essentially, we were led to believe that FEMA would be reimbursing us at 87.5% of those purchases. And then we were then told about a week, maybe a week and a half ago by the state, that they didn't anticipate that that was going to come through and that they were allocating additional dollars for us to charge against. But I, it sounds as though that now is being stepped back by the state as well. Dr. Sullivan, do you want to provide additional update?
Yeah, you were pretty accurate, except that it was five days ago that they told us. They had originally, in the information put out by the DOE, had recommended districts do a split, as we did, and following that directive, and then on Thursday, in about a five-minute, oh, by the way, mentioned, we now know that that's not working, so we're putting out another CARES Act grant, and you'll get it this afternoon. So we did receive that this afternoon. We are in the midst of writing that CARES Act grant. And it will offset about a little over half of what we had anticipated from FEMA reimbursement. So at this point, my expectation is to convert most of that over to that CARES Act grant and then continue to work with risk management to submit ones that we can't move over in the event we do get some reimbursement. So we'll take the first $777,000, move it to new CARES Act. The rest of the PPE, cleaning supplies, and FEMA-eligible items that are in ESER, we will submit for reimbursement through FEMA in hopes of getting that, but knowing that we may or may not get that reimbursement. If that made any kind of sense, that would be surprising because this whole process makes no sense. So hopefully that helped.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. I know that you have been deep in juggling all of this, and we appreciate all the work that you're doing. And I appreciate that explanation. I think it's important for everyone to know some of the challenges that we're facing with some of the promises that are being made at different levels. So thank you so much for that explanation.
Yeah, no problem.
And Dr. Thedy, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but we've had a couple of people talk about, of course, Ms. West has been talking to us about substitute pay increases. Ms. DePaul spoke tonight about substitute pay as well. I know that we obviously have been talking about how to address our substitute shortage in lots of different ways. But do you have at the top of your mind, I know there's been so much going on, we did a substitute survey last year. And if I recall correctly, we asked substitutes if they preferred to have a per-hour pay raise or if they preferred to get a daily increase if they were working at priority schools. Can you just brief us on that? Because I think it's important to know that we're not ignoring the issue. But we did not have consensus that everyone preferred to have a pay raise over the other options. Is that correct?
That is correct. The preferences that our survey last year indicated, one was an additional supplement for those who worked 60 days in the school year. That was highly desirable. Another was additional pay to work at priority schools because that came out to be more than an hourly rate increase. There was not consistency on what everybody wanted. We put out the lunch as well as something that was an option. We also put out their reimbursement for all the fees that substitutes have to pay to become substitutes, fingerprinting, drug testing, the certification, and reimbursing that as well. And that was also desirable for the substitutes. But the one comment about the difference between a high school diploma and associate's degree, that is spot-on with change in hourly rate, that has compressed the pay between those two ranges. So our last speaker, or second-to-last speaker spoke to that, and that is correct.
Thank you so much for giving us those details. I appreciate it. And certainly not to overlook any of the other speakers that we heard tonight. Thank you, Mr. Savage, Ms. Skipper, Mr. Hilliard, and Mr. Kluci for bringing forward some of the concerns as well. We certainly don't mean to make it sound as though everything went perfectly on day one. But we know that we have some issues to work through, and I'm quite confident that our team in the back has been taking note of the things that you brought up, and they'll be reaching out to try to address those, so. All right, with that, we move on to the, did you have something, Mr. Susan?
I just wanted to say, Mr. Ray, thank you for coming in and saying such positive things. You got a couple of friends? You guys want to come here more often? We'd enjoy it. You know, I'm thinking about possibly making the Robert Ray Award for the greatest speech at here, you know? I mean, this guy came down here to tell us good stuff. And, you know, not that we need good stuff, actually, we need good stuff, so. Anytime- Robert, I think, Dr. Mullins, you can make stuff like that happen. He's the guy that makes that happen.
Well, and then he came two weeks ago with a concern.
Yeah.
The concern was met, and he came back to report and said, "There you go."
But I just wanted to say thank you for coming down here. That's all. And I think I am going to have some fun with this Robert Ray Award thing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Susan. I had meant to address that directly as well. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda. Dr. Mullins?
There are 12 agenda items under this category.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Does any board member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, then I will entertain a motion to accept the consent items as presented.
Move to approve.
Second. Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Duskovich. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have a bit.
Ms. McDougal?
I just wanted to give a shout-out because it's finally here, that Merritt Island High School will get a restroom on their ball field. This is, work in the process. It's taken about eight years. And I want to thank Sue Han and Principal Reamer, and of course, the Merritt Island community who supported and gave money to this. This has been ongoing, and I'm very excited that we are moving ahead. So thank you.
And we are excited for you, Ms. McDougal. Thank you so much. Any additional discussion on the items? Or on the agenda?
On number 12, our inter-local agreement CARES Act funding. Just don't want to blow past that without recognizing that the Board of County Commissioners, you might want to just give us a little more details, but the Board of County Commissioners has agreed to share some of the county-wide CARES Act funding that's come with the school district. We don't know the amount on that yet, right?
Yes, so the county received their own allocation of CARES Act grant funding, considerably larger allocation than Brevard Public Schools received. However, they reached out to Frank Abate, county manager, and asked, "Might the school district qualify as a nonprofit to apply for consideration of those funds?" And he came back and said, "Yes." Thank you to the county commission. They voted unanimously to include us as a nonprofit agent to apply for funds. We have submitted, I believe, seven requests totaling well over $3 million. Three and a half million dollars of requests. Couple of the items include additional hours for our health techs in our schools. So rather than Ms. Moore, they currently, six and a half hours? Five and a half hours. We requested funding to staff them for eight hours in our school so that we would have a health tech full-time for semester. We also requested additional funding for mental health services for our students, funds to cover all of the individual food wrapping that's required in our food service program. Ms. Moore, can you think of some of the other requests?
Yeah, hotspots.
Hotspots for our students?
And before and after care, help with our before and after care. We did, we asked for help with, like you said, the mental health program. That one, they can't, it was not acceptable given the parameters of that grant. And then the last one was nurses. There was a last one. There was another one. But they're supposed to be getting back with us probably one day this week to determine if we're able to move forward with that.
Good. Well, I just wanted to thank the county commissioners for allowing us to have that additional funding. It is very much needed and appreciated.
The inter-local agreement is just an acknowledgement that if funds go unused, they have to be returned to the county for the grant.
I did remember the last one. It was for 20 additional social workers in our schools.
Very good. Thank you. Any additional discussion on the consent agenda? All right, then please vote. And the motion passes 5-0. All right, that is going to move us into our action agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Belfort and members of the board, there are a total of three action items for us to go through. Item G23 is on procurement solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. McDougal. Is there any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
Item G24 is department-school initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Duskovich. Any discussion?
I'd just like to point out that in a couple of these items, our team is already working hard to cost-save. If you look through some of the items that are in here, the SAT, in different areas, I know that we had a speaker, the gentleman, one of the substitute teachers, mentioned that we need to start now preparing. And I just wanted to point out that even on tonight's agenda, there are areas that staff and Dr. Mullins is looking for every single dollar to save and tuck away.
Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Duskovich. I think that's important as well. Any additional discussion? All right.
Contracts for the Midcoast, the rest, good stuff. That finally came together.
All right, please vote. The motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
G25 is for the ratification of emergency procurements related to COVID-19.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve. Second.
Is that Ms. Campbell on the first?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Motion by Ms. Campbell, seconded by Ms. McDougal. Any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes 5-0. We'll move on to the information agenda, which includes items for board review and may be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight. Dr. Mullins?
There are four items under the information category.
Does any board member wish to discuss any of the four information items this evening?
I just have a question on the personnel allocations. Are these based on, I'm guessing maybe this is for Dr. Thedy, are these based on projected enrollment? Or are these based on actual enrollment? And at what point does this change? Usually, we approve it for the year, and it has to stay that way. I'm wondering if we're 14,000 students down, how this looks different mid-year?
These allocations have not changed over the last few years. They are the same. They're based on our enrollments. You know, the allocation factors are contingent upon student enrollment, so we'll have to look at that closely as we go through our six-day count.
So we haven't even, we haven't made any adjustments in here for COVID either. I mean, this is a separate question because it seems like, anyway, have we made any adjustments?
We have not made any adjustments for COVID now. Thank you.
Any additional questions on any of the information items? All right, seeing none, we will move on to board member discussion. Does any board member have anything else they would like to report at this time? Mr. Susan?
Thank you. Just wanted to give the board a heads-up that, so we keep having these pre-K issues over and over again. First, it's best and brightest. Then it's retirement. Then it's this. Then it's that. And it just, and then even with our reopening plan, the stuff was coming out of Office of Early Learning, and there was delayment, and it's just like, every single time we talk about pre-K, we find that they're not respected to be a part of our K through 12, right? So one of the things is, as many know, like I was in Tallahassee with them, we were pounding away. We got some headroom. We changed some of the, we educated a lot of people on some of the issues, and we got some stuff moving. But the problem is, is we just keep coming up with stuff. So what, when I was talking to Debbie Mayfield, Thad Altman, Placencia, and the rest of them, and I said, "Look," I said, "Instead of us just trying to fix this thing like one at a time, I think that we need to come up with a pre-K commission. Ask the legislature to sit down and just evaluate it as an early learning coalition. Put it together as how it ties into K through 12 and address all the issues that we have with pre-K." So I called Jane Goodwin from the Florida School Board Association and some of the other groups and said, "Hey, would this be something that you would think about possibly putting on our-" putting on our agenda? So what I was going to ask, now's not the appropriate time, but think about possibly being one of our legislative issues that we have coming up, and in the meantime, I'm going to go try to bird-dog some of the other legislators to tell them, hey, would you think about this? So that it's, one of the issues we have is, is that we establish our thing, everybody gets elected, then all of a sudden, session happens, and it's just so fast, right? So if I can put it in their ear now, if I can start aligning some of the stuff, so I just wanted to tell you guys that. And then one little note, Dr. Mullins, is that our reopening plan says K through 12. If we can add pre to the whole front of that, that'd be good, too. And that's it. I just want to tell you guys that, so if you hear me moving around, you know my direction and what I'm trying to do. But I do know that that, as far as a district, that comes up for us to discuss, but I'm going to try to push it personally. All right?
Ms. Klein is requesting attention.
Uh-oh. What happened?
Mr. Susan, the pre-K plan is a totally separate plan, so our plan is our K through 12 plan, and we have a separate pre-K. And there were, there have been every day this week, Marilyn Chappie has sat on an Office of Early Learning Coalition meeting, and they are making additional adjustments to the pre-K opening plans.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Any additional items for discussion this evening?
I've got something I wanted to share. I believe I shared last, pre-COVID, I don't remember how long ago, that the city of Palm Bay was wanting to host a Palm Bay Steam Day, and they were going to invite the schools, especially schools who have steam academies or programs, to come and be a part. You know, kind of all got put on the back burner for the last several months, but they are, I met with the Youth Advisory Board last night, and Deputy Mayor Johnson shared that they are moving forward with that. They're changing plans. Instead of an indoor venue, it's going to be at Fred Poppy Park, but the date is November the 14th, from 10:00 to 3:00, they're going to do it outside, and, you know, all the precautions and everything, but they're moving forward, and, and really excited to have this opportunity for our students, who would love to come out and, and, and get to see, you know, science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics, all in, in motion, and what it would look like, and inspire them to pursue careers in those areas. That'll be on November the 14th, and I'll send out some more information as we get closer to the date. And then also, just wanted to remind everybody who may not have done your census, they have extended the deadline for getting your census information to October, so if you're still waiting out there, you don't want people to come knocking on your door, then go online and fill out your census information so that we can, because every dollar counts. Every person counts, and we want to make sure that Brevard County is actually looking really good compared to the state and the nation, so keep, keep it up, Brevard, and go get counted. But those deadlines have been extended to October.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Any other board members have any issues to address? Dr. Mullins, anything else to report this evening? Seeing no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Have a great night.